Good evening. My name is not Christian Klein, as those of us who know Christian can attest. But I am Pat Hanlon, and I am the acting chair of the Arlington zoning board of appeals, at least for the first part of this evening. And I'm calling this meeting to order. I'd like to confirm that all members and anticipated officials are present. Members of the zoning board of appeals, Roger Dupont here. Daniel Riccadelli.
Here.
Elaine Hoffman.
Here.
And I'm here. We're expecting Vanquette Holy. In imminently, and so he will, I will be able to join us in just a few minutes. In terms of town officials, Colleen Wallston. Zoning assistant.
Here.
Colleen, do you know if Vincent Lee is here?
Um, I do not think he's here, and I believe that Rick. So really is not here either.
Okay. So I'd like to then go down the list of the people appearing for the applicants. Appearing for 189 Forest Street is Ilya Zvanikarotsky here. He had indicated that he may not be.
I don't see him.
Appearing for 79 Dothan Street, Adam and Jessica Marcovitz.
Here.
Yeah, it's actually 75 Dothan Street.
What did I say?
79.
I stand corrected. I'm sorry.
It's all right. As long as we get our appeal, we're happy.
That's right. Appearing for 212 Pleasant Street.
Here.
Nellie Aikenhead. Appearing for 20 Hobbs Court.
Bob Innesi. Yes.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you as well.
Right, so we'll go through the usual preliminaries. This open meeting of the Arlington zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely, consistent with an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations signed into law on July 16, 2022. This act includes an extension until March 31, 2023 of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 executive orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, which suspended the requirement to hold all meetings in a publicly acceptable physical location. Public bodies may continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location, so long as they provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. Public bodies may meet remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. An opportunity for public participation will be provided during the public comment period during each public hearing. For this meeting, the Arlington zoning board of appeals has convened a video conference via the Zoom application with online and telephone access, as listed on the agenda posted to the town's website, identifying how the public may join. This meeting is being recorded, and it will be broadcast by ACMI. Please be aware that attendees are participating by a variety of means. Some attendees are participating by video conference. Others are participating by computer audio or by telephone. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, your screen name, or another identifier. Please take care to not share any personal information. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We ask that you please maintain decorum during the meeting, including the display of inappropriate background. All supporting materials that have been provided, members of this body, are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along the posted agenda. As chair, I reserve the right to take items out of order in the interest of promoting an orderly meeting. As the board will be taking up new business at this meeting, as chair or acting chair, I make the following land acknowledgement. Whereas the zoning board of appeals for the town of Arlington, Massachusetts discusses and arbitrates the use of land in Arlington, formerly known as monotomy and Algonkin working swift waters, the board hereby acknowledges that the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous peoples from whom the colony, province, and commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and to their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. The agenda has several hearings scheduled tonight. We'll go through each one of these. The first one that is scheduled is docket number 3731, 189 Forest Street. This has already been heard, and it was continued tonight to give the applicant time to provide material and response to the extensive testimony that occurred at the original hearing. Earlier today, the applicant, who, unless he's recently arrived, is not here, requested a continuance by letter to the board, asking to give him the opportunity, greater opportunity, to respond to the various issues that both the board and the people who spoke at that hearing raised. The next meeting that we have is March 28. And the chair will entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until a date certain of March 28 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard.
So moved.
Second, moved by Mr. Dupont. Is there a second?
I can't.
Seconded by Mr. Riccadelli. Let's take a vote, Mr. Dupont.
Aye.
Mr. Riccadelli.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion carries. I know many of you who were here, and there's a great deal of interest in this, and I look forward to seeing you seeing you all, or at least many of you, next month. But we won't proceed any further with 189 Forest Street this evening. The next item on the agenda will be docket number 3733, 212 Pleasant Street. And there's a substantial number of people who are, I'm sure, going to discuss this one as well. Ms. Aikenhead, are you going to do the presentation for this?
Uh, yes, I can do that. We are looking, it's an 800 square foot house, three rooms total, and a basement. We are looking to do an addition and put on a second floor, which would bring it up to just under 2,200 square feet. And because we're increasing the total living area by more than 50%, we need to get a special permit. I can answer any questions that the board has.
Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know, and I suspect that the applicant hasn't had the benefit of seeing some comments that had been sent to the board members regarding this proposal. And I guess the question is, have the applicant seen this? Because I know that a couple of questions were raised by planning. And one of them was a question, and I'm just going to say what was in this email, so that you can comment. But one of them was whether or not it would be two or two and a half stories. And that was asked to be clarified, because there was a question as to whether the proposed basement would be a story. And the second issue is an observation on the part of Marissa Lau saying that there is some amount of usable open space on the property. And the question then is, because she said that the application doesn't provide a calculation to show that the proposal meets the 30% open space. And so there is that question as to whether or not that 30% open space requirement is met. So I guess I would just lay those out as issues that have been cited by the planning department.
Ms. Aikenhead?
Okay, so I did actually get that memo at 5:45 tonight. I do have the calculations for the open space. It is, I believe, well over the required minimum. I did submit it to the town on January 8, but I don't think it made its way out to the board, perhaps, so I could share my screen if you want to see that. I did email it back to, I think it was Colleen, this evening, so she also has it in her email.
So is it? Nellie, is this the, there is a calculation that shows in the staff materials that we've been given that shows that usable open space is about 175% of the gross floor area of the house that, as you're proposing it? Is the calculation that you have done different from that, do you know?
I mean, I calculated it. Let me just sit here. I have it, I have it showing as 28% unusable, 56% usable, and 15% open space landscaped, for a total of 100%.
Okay, well, maybe it'd be helpful if you just go through the figures for the, to, for the board.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to share the screen if that's okay.
That would be perfectly fine. Colleen, can you help her do that?
All set.
Okay, thank you. So can you see this, or should I make it bigger?
If you made it a little bigger, it would help those of us over 70.
And me too, because I can hardly read it. Can you make it bigger, please?
Oh, that's better.
Is that okay? I can do it. Okay, so I think we have the existing GFA 822, and we have the proposed 2175. The footprint of the house of 822 going to 1176. The parking area is getting a little bit bigger from 480 to 638. And I, there's a little bit more steps to the front door. In terms of walkway, there's a little bit more steps to the side door. The sheds are going to be the same. So relative to the size of the lot, which is 6,800 square feet, this calculated out to about 29% unusable.
Okay, could we, could you get out in number 16, row 16?
Yeah.
I take it that the figure there for the usable open space is, that's the 3,811.25?
Correct, 56%.
Okay, and is that jibe with the calculation that was, that was made earlier? I think it, it should. That's where, that's where I think it came from.
Yeah, yeah, this is all, everything, this is in the application.
Okay, so then if you look at the next line, the, as a percentage of the GFA, which is what's relevant for usable open space for us, it indicates that that's 175%?
Oh, I see, yeah, exactly.
Okay, and that would be considerably more than 30% that's required.
Correct. There's a huge amount of open space. Honestly, it's a, it's a sick, pretty big lot with a pretty small house. And there's minimal hard surfaces.
Right. Okay, so maybe we, the second question is, is one that, that is a little harder to answer from the application materials. As I understand it, the house sort of backs into, is in a, on a hill, and on the basement level, the front part of it, or a part of it, on one, is sort of almost not buried at all. And, and much of it, and then it goes back into the hill, so in the back, or what I'm calling the back, it, it's quite a bit. And the question is whether or not that meets the zoning definition, the zoning bylaws definition of a story. And I wonder, if it does, then you have a three-story building instead of a two-story building, and that will create a difficulty with the half-story requirement for, on the third story. So I wondered if you can, if you're in a position to address that. Marissa basically asked the building department to do that, but this all came to us late enough that we have not gotten a building, building department determination.
Right, so I mean, you'll have to, I guess, turn to them for their expertise. I did go into the building department in September. I did talk to Rick. He did look at my, the plans, which has a very steep grade to the back of the building, which is on the spy pond side, does have the exposed basement, but it goes up very quickly. And he, at that time, and it was informal, so I'm not holding him to it, did say that we didn't have a story down in the basement. I did do some calculations, which I think are in my application. I did that calculation that you have with like the cellar versus basement. I came out with cellar myself, but he'd have to verify that.
Okay, so, so your view is basically that not only is it not a, that it's neither a cellar nor a basement? The definition of a cellar, I guess, is is
A over B under A2.
Yeah. Cellar is less than half of the building height is above the, is above the finished average grade. I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry, you go ahead.
No, I missed, well, the question, the question there would be, I gather, a basement is one where the, the amount of the, above the average finished grade is more than half. And, and a cellar would be less than half. So that's something that we'll have to leave open for the time being, I think.
Right, my calculations say it's a little bit under half, but I guess Rick will have to weigh in or somebody.
Mr. Dupont, do you have any more?
Yeah, I'm actually sort of going through the definitions in the bylaw. And I don't know that this actually adds anything to the conversation as far as what you've just read, Pat, regarding the definition of a basement. But it goes on to say in the definition of story that a basement shall be deemed a story when its ceiling is four foot, six inches or more above the finished grade. And I guess the question then that is posed is, what is the finished grade if you have a slope? And, and so I, I think that is exactly where we need the building department to chime in. So I guess I just, I don't know the answer from either of those definitions in the bylaw.
Right, I agree with that analysis. I, I have an average grade of 14.75. I did run it by the building department in September again, but you're right that you'll have to run it by them again, I think. There was one other comment I wanted to make on the memo that came out today, which says in the first paragraph that we are increasing the floor area from 822 to 2175, which is approximately a 265% increase. There's a mathematical error or a typo in there. It's 165% increase. I don't know if it matters, but I would like to make sure that that's correct.
Okay. I, I, you can see what she did is, instead of measuring the delta over the total, she measured the whole thing.
Exactly.
So, Nellie, in a lot of, in the in the application, there's a great deal of history in this case so far. You've been before various other boards, the Historic District Commission, you've been before CONCOM, and there are some other things that you've posed in this, in this property that are designed to achieve environmental benefits and so forth. And in I wonder if it may be a useful thing for you to expand a little bit on those beyond what's stated in the bare, the bare lines of the application form?
Sure. So we can keep it as low as we can. The roof line is 26 feet, where I think the maximum was 35 feet. We are also planning to make it as energy efficient as possible. We're going to go all electric. We're going to have triple pane windows. We're going to have heat pump, hopefully ducted heat pump system, ventilation system, ERV or HRV. And we're trying to achieve a really low HERS rating. So it will be, you know, a building that doesn't have any greenhouse gases and is kind of a modern kind of energy efficient structure.
And the hope is to add solar to even further increase.
Right, we are, yeah, we are talking, we've already talked to a solar company. We have to go back to the Historic District Commission to get the solar panels approved, but I think they would be approved. We're also doing some regrading of the parking. We don't have any driveway because we have no access, but we have parking. We're regrading it so that the runoff will go away from Spy Pond as opposed to what it currently does, which is go towards Spy Pond. We have a set of steps that go down to the pond, which we are also going to similarly regrade to help with drainage and erosion. And we are going to do way down by the pond, we have about a 25-foot wide swath of native plants that will help reduce runoff and also provide fruit and berries for the birds. And we're getting rid of all the invasors.
At present, do you have approval from those two bodies, the Conservation Commission and the HTC that you need to move forward, or is there something left?
No, no, we have everything, except for the solar panels, which would be an add-on, which we need Historic District Commission approval for. We have approvals for the house, the building, the landscape, the patio, the decks, everything from both entities.
Okay, so is there, is there any other, are there any other questions from the board, from the applicant?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Riccadelli.
I was just wondering, you know, for my benefit and maybe also for the benefit of other people who are interested in the hearing, wouldn't it be okay to ask the applicant to just give us a brief walkthrough of the plans and elevations they submitted? So we just make sure we understand the design?
Where is it? Ms. Aikenhead?
Sure, do you want me to show?
Ms. Bralston can do that if you wish.
Okay, we shared the screen again?
Yes.
She should, you should still have access.
Oh, yeah, okay. We do commute. So do you want to, like, I'll show you the outside. You probably don't care about the inside. So this is the side of the building that's facing Pleasant Street. You can't see it from Pleasant Street, but the neighbors will be able to see this. This is a sloped roof, so this isn't in the second story. This is about 26 feet high. It's flat. And you'll see later, the solar panels will be on the pond side. We're hoping not on this side, so as to be less obvious from the street side. This would be the right side of the building if you're going down the driveway. See, this is the sloped roof. This is the 26 feet. This right here is the addition. And this is the rear of the building. So the rear is, it does look a lot bigger, but it's not visible unless you're on Spy Pond. So we tried really, if you see here, to tuck it down low for the neighbors. And then in the back, where it's less visible, is where we have a little bit more height in total. And this is the other side of the building. Did you want me to go over any additional details?
Mr. Riccadelli?
No, that's, that's very helpful. Just on the, I think on the end sheet with the site plan, if you could just point out just the, the area of the addition, just for context, that would be great.
I mean, this has been a little bit. So there, so this, so they, this is Pleasant Street way up here. We come down like this. This little L-shaped thing is the 822 feet that are currently there. And if you go down, this square here is the addition. So this is the 350. And this is the L. This whole space is empty backyard usable open space.
Could you explain how you, what is the arrangement for getting, for getting in, right?
That's a problem we haven't totally solved. So, so we have, we have access. You can easily drive a car down there, a pickup truck. I'm going to see if I, oh, I can scroll it over. So here's Pleasant Street. We have a right-of-way down here. This, this belongs to these people. We have a right-of-way here, and we have a right-of-way here, so we can get in there. Getting a concrete truck in there is going to be difficult, to be impossible. So we're looking at what alternatives we have. It's pretty tight.
There's just a construction issue, not a living issue.
Right.
Mr. Riccadelli, is there anything more?
No, that's, that's very clear. Thank you. I want to point out one thing, that this is the parking area that's currently impermeable. And this is what we're going to change to a permeable surface.
Right, this is a public hearing. And before opening the public part of it, I wanted to give you some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of tonight's business. After I announced the item and had the applicant introduces themselves and gave the presentation they just did, I'll now open the meeting to public comment. Probably questions and comments will only be taken as they relate to the matter at hand. They should be directed to the board for the purpose of informing our decision and not directly to the applicant. Members of the public will be granted time to ask directions and make, excuse me, ask questions and make comments. Members of the public who wish to speak should digitally raise their hand using the button on the participant tab in the Zoom application. Those calling in by phone, please dial nine to indicate that you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the meeting host. You will be asked to give your name and address, and you will be given time for your questions and comments. All questions are to be addressed through the chair, and please remember to speak clearly. Anyone wishing to address the board a second time during any particular hearing, the chair will allow those wishing to speak for the first time to speak first. Once all public questions and comments have been addressed or the allocated time has ended, the public comment period will be closed. The board and staff will do our best to show documents that, that are, are being discussed. There are quite a few people who are here tonight, and it could be a relatively long night, so I'd encourage people to be as focused as they can and avoid, if possible, repetition of what others are saying and focus in on what you have to add that hasn't been said yet. That being the case, I now announce the beginning of the public hearing. Could we? All right, the first, the first person I have up is John Garber.
Great, thanks. Thanks so much. I'm, I'll try to keep it brief here. But just first want to thank certainly the zoning board of appeals for, for having us at this meeting and giving us a chance to all comment. Really appreciate that. My name is John Garber, and I live with my wife Sabrina at 214 Pleasant Street. We moved into the house actually in June 2017. And then just a few weeks before our twins were born. This is our first home, and we plan to make this our home forever. You know, moving into this house and the birth of our, of our children are so completely linked in our experience that we measure how long we've been here by how old our, our children are. So our kids are five and a half. You know, they've spent their entire lives in this, you know, quiet, sort of wonderful pocket of a neighborhood that, that is near Spy Pond. And for them, it's been, and for us, it's been absolutely filled with light, air, nature, and, and I think most importantly with, with neighbors, really, that have become, you know, our, our best, best friends. So I do want to just, I think the key point that I want to emphasize is that, you know, we're, we're, we're not experts in, in this process. This is our first house. This is our first process. We, we just, you know, are not at all experts. And we, we really need, need a little bit more time. You know, we, we received the notice that there was, you know, that, that the owner of 212 was requesting a special permit. We received that notice, I think, on, on Friday afternoon. So, you know, we had, you know, in essence, about two business days, if you include, include today. And, and, you know, Dan, thanks so much for just kind of, you know, requesting kind of a high-level walkthrough of some of what's been proposed, because I do, I do think it's important. I mean, the changes that are proposed, you know, they're really quite, quite significant. You know, will, will more than double the gross floor area from 800 over 2,000 square feet. And, and I think as Nellie, of course, walked, walked us through, this will include adding, you know, an additional floor, will include expanding out beyond the existing footprint by 350 square feet on both the first and second level. And I think the one thing, as we look at this plan that's in front of us, is it doesn't really It does a really good job of conveying, you know, the existing structure at two twelve and, and what, what is proposed as part of this project. And all in relation to the property lines, but I, I think what, what's missing here is how this relates to the, the actual houses that are all around and all sides of this, uh, of this, of this house and. You know, we really feel that we can't really convey how close together the existing homes are and really kind of how sort of discordant the scale of this project would be with the neighboring houses and, and how much this may potentially impact our neighborhood. So. You know, I think given the, 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 the scale of the proposed changes, I think we, we really do need a little bit more time to fully understand how this. You know, how, how this, this, the proposal will impact us and, you know, how it might impact our quality of life and, and the character of our neighborhood. So. You know, we did, we do our best to put together kind of a, 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 a letter that would, you know, from, from each of the neighboring properties and collectively and. Uh, on very short notice and we, we did submit that. I don't know if it made it into the materials. I hope the board can, can, can have a chance to review that. We would really appreciate it. I, I just, I don't want to take a lot of time, but I do want to just maybe highlight just a few high level points from that. You know, I, I think we just now tried to understand what, what, you know, are the conditions in which, you know, an exception to the, the town bylaws are granted. And I think one of the key themes that kept coming up was. You know, whether those changes would be essential and, 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 and overall beneficial to the welfare of the, the neighborhood. And. I just, I'm not clear, you know, that, 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 that was being proposed really would be beneficial to the welfare of neighborhood. And I, I, I wonder if it will actually be, be term concerned that it'll actually be detrimental. Um, you know, both on the, you know, potentially the property values, but as well, just more importantly, the quality of, the quality of our life. You know, we're, we're very um close knit community, uh, and we grew even, you know, much, much closer during the pandemic where there were endless days of, you know. The center of gravity of all of our lives moved inward into our homes and. You know, we're very, you know, we're constantly paying close attention to, to each other and we're conscious of how our actions impact our neighbors. And, you know, I think this considerateness is, you know, very, very essential, given how close our houses are together. Um. And I just wanted to put a little numbers on it because it's not apparent from any of the materials here that are, that are submitted and, 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 you know, we can take as an example, the, the, the plot, the plan that we're looking at here. You know, the house at two twelve Pleasant Street is. Um, o- only a hundred and ten inches from the property line. Uh, that it shares with our house and the next nearest house at uh two ten Pleasant Street, it's a hundred and thirty-two inches from the property line. And I think, um, you know, even with the flat roof, um, I, I think it's, you know. Clear that the, the views, the free flow of air, uh, like, these are all going to be blocked by adding the addition of the second story. Um, certainly from the, the upstairs bedroom, but as well light, I think into our first floor, which is our kitchen, our dining room, our, our, our family room. And I likewise, I think the, the views from two ten to sixteen to eighteen Pleasant Street, these all have the, the potential of being partially, partially blocked as well. You know, one thing I measure, I mentioned was we had these five-year-old kids. You know, one of their favorite activities is actually just digging huge holes, making tons of mud in the garden, which is currently uh situated just in that little sliver between two, between our house and two twelve. And. You know, I think. You know, the proposed renovation, you know, and now you mentioned it's a twenty-six foot, you know, I mean, that's. You know, potentially would erect essentially a twenty-six foot wall. You know, one hundred inches away from that garden. And, you know, I don't need to kind of belabor the point, but I think the mental picture here is clear that this really will obstruct, you know, sunlight. Air will, will really kind of radically change their relationship to the natural environment and the beauty of Spy Pond. So I think for us, I think that's, you know, very stressful and. Um, and, and, and concerning. Um. I think also, you know, I, I think we're concerned, you know, we, we love Spy Pond, you know, this is our, this is the only home we've known and. Um, I, I worry that there will be a, you know, sort of a precedent for um waterfront properties to, to go ahead and make large additions and to do so without really, you know, much concern for, for how this affects the neighbors and, and their quality of life. Um, and, and then I think, you know, I think now you. I, 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 you know, touched on the driveway. It's, it's a very um u- unique driveway. And as you mentioned, I mean, the access to your property or, or sorry, we're addressing the board, the access to two twelve is. You know, by, by an easement, um, a- and it's a, and the. The, the driveway is jointly owned by the properties at two fourteen, sixteen and eighteen. It's a steep driveway. It's a fragile driveway and it's narrow at points. There are tight, there are at least two very tight turns. Um, and it poses really real challenges even for sort of moderate sized cars. I, I think we're, we're really concerned that. You know, how we're going to navigate this with construction vehicles, equipment, building supplies, how we're going to ensure that there isn't, you know, significant damage to the driveway, to the foliage, to the, to the structures. And how we ensure that this, this project at this scale gets completed safely and. And, and that, and that, and that the pedestrians that need to use that driveway to get to and from school and work, that we can do so in a way that, that, that is safe and, 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 um. And reliable. And then finally, I just have two final, um, final points and, and. I think they're the most, you know, um, a- and these are just top of mind for us. I think. You know, I mentioned we, we, we deeply cherish our relationship, you know, with our neighbors and I, you know, I, I think we have a nagging concern that. That, that the owners, you know, would, would potentially flip this house. Um, you know, the resident is not a neighborhood, is not a resident, uh, the owner is not a resident of the property. Um, you know, according to her real estate website, she uses her depth and breadth of real estate experience to facilitate, you know, quote as um high quality residential flips. And I think only, um, you know, only she and her husband can truly know in their hearts what, you know, what, what their intention is in terms of. Living there and be, being, being neighbors with us and being friends and. Um, but I think our concern is that, you know, potentially not being a neighbor means that the applicant may not be as invested in the community that we've, you know. In maintaining good relations with the neighbors and preserving this really unique kind of. Pocket of Arlington that we've, we've worked really hard to, to, to build over several years. And then I, I think my final point that I, that I want to make before I, before I, I guess see the floor is like. Probably reflects my ignorance and how little I really understand about this process, but. I just want to throw out there if it's, you know, even at all a remote possibility that, that. You know, members of the board, if you could just come down and visit. Um, you know, I just, I, I think again, these plans really can't convey the. The nature of how close together these homes are and how they relate to the pond. And. I, I think in order to understand that, that proximity and how there's harmony between. The largest house up on Pleasant Street and kind of working its way down to the pond front where there's a, you know, a modest cottage. There and how all of that is, I think, very well harmonized. Um. I think a site visit would also make more obvious the significant challenges with the driveway in terms of, you know, the logistics of the proposed project of this scale. And I think also to really fully understand and appreciate the unique character of the small, the small neighborhood and I, and I think which, which will be detrimentally impacted by the. You know, by the proposed changes here. So. Um, I, that's all we really wanted to say. I think there's more that we kind of tried to put together in, in, in our initial letter that we had just drafted late last night as a, as a sort of group of neighbors here, but. Um, again, just really, really thank, thankful for having the chance to kind of come in and talk here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next person on our list is Shou Liu.
Hi, yes. Um, can I also share my screen? I think that's easier for, for me. Thank you. I, let me see. Okay, so, um. This is the video I take today, if everyone can see. Uh, this is kind of express how, what, what John is trying to say is we really close to each other. This is from our bedroom, master bedroom. So, um. You can see the greenhouse is John's house and the white house is two one, uh, two twelve. And we are two eighteen. Um, so. I just take short clip, clip. So if they do the addition, it will actually literally on our property line and uh. We, we already could hear everything from my living room. Uh, let have a, a maybe. A guy or friend to visit before on the site, uh, about a month ago. Talking really loud and I, I, we have a six months older baby and then my baby cannot sleep for whole afternoon. So that will be one potential like we are concerning because it's really close. Um. And, uh, so this is, uh. Let me see if I can share this one. So this is the survey we also have. Um. So we are two eighteen, the least people here. Um. The driveway is also biggest concern that we have. Um, so the driveway is actually owned by, uh. By two sixteen Matt and two fourteen John and us. The driveway, as you can see, it's not big enough to have any concrete truck to, to the side. And, uh, we have a right of way to share, which is okay, but the driveway is not strong enough as well. Uh, I have a video here that. Nellie actually has a tree service last year. And, uh, let me see if I can share it. I'll do.
Are you guys able to see the video? We're trying to.
No, no.
Okay, let me see. Okay, this one. I think I'm sharing. So.
Could I, could I interrupt you for a second, please?
Yeah.
And I know where that this video will after seven seconds show somebody, uh, who I can't identify myself, but who I don't think is anyone here. Um, coming across the screen and I would prefer not to show a video. That has somebody on it that's going to be without his consent blazoned over. Over ACMI. So if you, much of this is consists of about. A minute of loud noises. If you could either go after the. Period where the man comes across or if you could go up to that first seven seconds.
Oh, it's not the men loud noises. It's, I, I, I just share about traffic right now.
Well, why, why don't we, if this is the one I think it is, there's, at seven seconds, there's a fellow who's going to come out and deliver something in the front.
Oh, that's what you mean. Okay. Uh, then I can show you another one. Um. Let me see. Okay, so. So I want to show this is actually the driveway that. The driveway itself cannot hold a big machinery or a truck at all. And, uh, as Nellie was saying, she tried to figure out the way, you know, how to bring those trucks in. We also concerned. About how the truck were going. Um. It might be just parking up front yard or let's share driveway. And since all three of us are using that shared driveway. Uh, it's not that easy yet and practical for of us. For, for this to go on, let's, let's just, just say it. And, uh. As you can see. Uh, the right of way here is super narrow. It's just tough for each other. Uh, we are really concerned that this is not practical for the project. And I think my another point. Um. The noise. So the noise, yes, a- as I just mentioned, um. We all are old house over here and we hear each other clearly. If the addition is more close to us, we literally can't hear anything like previous resident. We kind of like joking around like she can hear my dog and then she will ask me, oh, how's your dog today? From her, her house. So. Um, we are really concerned about new addition if. We don't know what's going on and we've been taken by surprise to be honest. We got this notice last Friday. And, uh, we don't even know. Love floor plan until now.
Can I just have a question? You, 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 did you receive no notice of this prior to last Friday? There should have. I would, I would think there ought to have been a letter to a butters that went out sometime earlier than that.
Um, no, I, we actually only get this later last Friday and, uh, that's why we kind of like all bumped. We. Have no idea what's going on. John and I and also Jessica, Matt, we were like chatting. We were discussing like. What's going on? We didn't see any floor plan. And then we also didn't know about addition as well. No one discussed with us.
Thank you.
No problem.
Is there anything else, Ms. Liu?
That's it.
Uh, our next speaker is, is Ms. Rebecca Gruber. Could you, I, I have not actually, I, because I'm inexperienced in this and I forgot. But when you begin, could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
I was just about to. Rebecca Gruber, two fifteen Pleasant Street. Um, I've lived at two fifteen Pleasant Street for thirty years. It's directly across the street from this little neighborhood that we're talking about. I guess my concern and. Pardon my ignorance about the role of the zoning board of appeals despite having lived in Arlington for thirty years. There are many things that I might like changed about my property or about my neighbors' properties. Um, but when I bought my house, I bought it under certain constraints. And I paid a certain price based upon those constraints. One of them is that I happen to live on Pleasant Street, which has lots of traffic and I. Accept that as part of the purchase of my home. I remember when two fourteen uh was for sale. I remember looking at two twelve. And I thought to myself, hmm. That's interesting. What happens if somebody buys two twelve and redevelops it? What happens to two fourteen? And as it turns out, there are rules and regulations as to what can be done to two twelve. And. What is being proposed is drastically different than the circumstances under which. I or anyone else would have bought two twelve. Excuse me, two fourteen. So. I appreciate someone wanting to improve a property, wanting to, uh. Buy it, sell it for more by making changes that make it more desirable. But I thought the zoning board of appeals is here to protect us. And to operate within the constraints established when we buy our homes. And I'm concerned about. The precedent this might set for other properties in town to be dramatically changed, impacting neighbors who've lived there for a long time. Or maybe for a short time, having just bought a house, thinking that certain rules and regulations will apply. And, uh, this is a very drastic. Significant change under which the conditions of the neighbors of this, um, property, um. Bought their homes and understood the living conditions under which they expected to have when they bought those homes. Um, I will also say Pleasant Street is a very busy street. There is not a lot of parking. On the opposite side of the street. A significant construction project while, uh. The applicants have indicated. You know, when the construction is done, it probably won't be noticeable to people walking up and down or driving on Pleasant Street, but until the construction is done. It will affect Pleasant Street and Pleasant Street is affected regularly by all sorts of construction that happens on it. So I don't think having more of, uh. Construction vehicles and other, uh, types of, um. Activity will be helpful to the significant traffic that's happening on Pleasant Street, but that's a personal issue. I am much more concerned about the precedent that will be set if the zoning board of appeals should approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruber. Can I just say, our job is actually to enforce the zoning ordinance? And the zoning bylaw has a specific provision in it, which is cited in the notice that you've seen. Um, that governs large additions and allows them under certain circumstances. And we're required to find those certain, certain circumstances exist. Uh, and. We're, we're supposed to consider among the relevant facts and all the things that you've seen in, in the, in the staff report. Um, the, uh. Proposed alteration or additions, dimensions and setbacks relating to abutting structures and uses. And conformity to the purposes of the bylaw set forth in an earlier provision. Um, so we're forced to, to see, it, it isn't really strictly a matter of whether it's a big change or a little change. But it is a matter of whether it's a change that in some way adversely affects neighboring properties and one that meets the general requirements that we apply for all special exceptions. Um, and if it does, we, we often and sometimes, we sometimes approve quite major changes and. Sometimes we disapprove even minor ones, uh, because. They, they may not, under certain circumstances, taking into account the neighborhood in particular. Uh, they may not meet the requirements of the statute, but that's where we are. It's a rule of law sort of thing. We have a bylaw that we are required to, uh. Uh, are required to enforce and, and, uh, and we will. We will uphold the law one way, one way or the other. Um. So the next speaker is. Let's see. I'm sorry, I, I lost track of who's next. Ms. Dawson, were you next?
Yes, yes. Hi, uh, my name is Jessica Sun Dawson. This is my husband, Matt Dawson. And we live in, uh, two sixteen Pleasant Street. So I just have a few points I'd like to make as well. Um, so kind of following up from our neighbor Rebecca, um, there are a lot of constructions in our, on our street. However. Like other people have mentioned before us, the driveway is a pretty unique situation. It's pretty narrow. Even. Regular cars will have trouble turning. Um, so I think this is a pretty significant, um. Significant impact for our lives, um, although. Um, although temporarily, um, and um, yeah, it will have a pretty significant impact during the construction. So for a project this size, we would really request that this to be considered very carefully. And another thing that Show has mentioned, um, we live in historic homes. So um we work really hard on maintaining the character of this neighborhood. And one of the drawbacks of living in a historic home is that the insulation is not very great. Um, we don't have central air. So in the summer, usually I open my window to, and I work from home. So a lot of, there were times where the noises were pretty loud and I um. It, it's, it's gonna be pretty uh impactful for our lives during this time. And um, not to repeat the point too much, but um this project will make the houses in our neighborhood very tight and very close to one another. And this will change the layout um near the waterfront dramatically. And the next point I would like to say is that um we have an easement to the pond and the easement is shared between the uh Show's property and two twelve. Um, and the addition of parking lot wall. Um, and then uh just imagine, in order to accommodate parking of a bigger house, they probably will need to park two cars instead of one car because there's no overnight street parking in Arlington that will really obstruct our access to the pond. And we love spy pond. Um, we go, we kayak there in the summer and we skate on the pond in the winter when it's frozen. So it's, it's a really precious thing for us. And also um when we bought the house, that was a big uh, a big value for us. And um one of the argument has been really hard for me to um hear is that um this will have environmental benefit. I, I don't quite understand why, and this is to the board. I don't understand why do we have to, why additional floor will be necessary to improve the um either for, for plants or um im- improvement of environmental value. That, that shouldn't be linked to um the increase of floor print, either the base or the addition of floor. Um. And one point I like to make about the construction is I, I do sincerely worry about the safety of our neighborhoods. Uh, we have, we have two. Well, not us, sorry. John and Sabrina have two kids, uh just five years old and Show has a baby. Um, the, the way the driveway is set up, um, the twins play in the yard all the time. I'm sincerely worried about doing this time uh their safety. Um, and also, um, I, I think, fine, the final point is that Matt and I have been here uh for eight years and we are a really close knit community like John had mentioned. And um I'm really close to John and Sabrina and the kids. And um one of the things I'm always really proud is that, that like my name just is one of the first, first words the kids learn to say, and I'm really proud of that. Um, and yeah, and we've always been friends with the residents in two twelve as well. We had our wedding in our backyard, so it's Show and Abraham. Uh, we had our guest live in the lake house during that time. So this process, this whole process of this project, it just feels like it's not very inclusive or completely transparent. Um, during the historic commission meeting, we raised the concern of the footprint and hide and crick, and hide and crease. And our concerns were um quickly dismissed and we were told that no special permit was required. Um, so I, I think we, we really do have a lot of concerns of how this will impact our lives and set precedent. Um, and we would like the board to consider to give us more time um to delay this, delay this decision and give us more time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dawson. Uh, tomorrow, Joseph.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to comment here. Uh, my name is Tamar Joseph and fifteen years ago in two thousand and eight, I moved into two ten Pleasant Street with my husband and then five year old son. So same age as um the twins next door. Um, and he has grown up in this house. Uh, we are long term tenants here. Uh, the owners of the property are the Hart family, who have been here from the nineteen seventies. Uh, Doctor and Mrs. Hart live at two oh eight Pleasant Street, the big house right on the street with the semi circular driveway. And their daughter Alexis Ha- Hart uh manages my home. I have gotten to know all the neighbors in this area over the past fifteen years and welcomed the other couples on this call when they first arrived. We have stayed at two ten Pleasant Street as tenants. Um, it was a surprise that we are still tenants, but because the hearts do not want to sell and we want to stay on state spy pond in this house, which is a wonderful home with much character. It is a deck house. Um, it does not have AC, central AC like the older ones here, so I share that in common. Um, a- and we love the house. We love this particular community in Arlington in general. Um, and we feel that we are really blessed to be living here. I've spoken with the hearts about this proposed bill at uh two um twelve and they share our concerns, but they were unfortunately unable to attend this hearing. The size and scope of the proposed build at two twelve has come as a rather unpleasant shock, which I learned about this last Saturday night. It is not consistent with what the applicants previously shared with me and other neighbors last year. We believe that their proposed addition will have quite negative impact on all of our properties, given its size. But we are also frankly troubled by how the applicants have proceeded. My home shares a property line with two twelve. On the, the um, the map that's on the screen, my home is on the water right next to two twelve. My bedroom and my son's bedroom and our bathrooms are only twenty two feet from the house. Our front door face, front doors face in the same direction. Two twelve is several feet closer to the pond. A thin line of trees and shrubs are between the homes. It is quite visible as you go down my driveway and stand at my door, at, at my front door. In the back of the house, my screen porch, where I work in the summer, is next to the property line and will be next to their newly installed deck. The backyards are separated by a low wooden fence that you could step over as well as shrubs. In the summer, when the windows are open, we can hear everything. Increasing the size of two twelve and the number of residents who could potentially live there will exacerbate the noise issue immensely. The extension will also impede my view of spy pond on one side. Um, more troubling, the house will be quite visible and look disproportionate on entry to my home. Um, it will look more akin to um neighborhoods in Cambridge, densely populated and densely populated parts of Arlington. It is not consistent with other waterfront areas up spy pond. The bathrooms and bedrooms will be on the same size as mine. And it appears that one will be able to see from their windows into my bathroom window, which is the only window on the outside of my home. At a minimum, their new story will block light into my home. We also share a common sewer line up the main sewer lo- uh up to the main sewer line on Pleasant Street. I have sadly learned way too much about that line over the past fifteen years. When there are, it, there are issues, the results are not pretty. Adding a much larger home that accommodates many more people is really not a positive development and will put additional strain on an already aged system. For the past fifteen years, only one person has lived there at a time. With this new build, more residents and guests will be using the plumbing. Because I've lived here fifteen years, I know a lot about the history of this particular neighborhood and of the additions to homes. The hearts added on to my home prior to my move here, but they were unable to add the two car garage and that they wished to do so because the then owner of two twelve felt that it would block his view of the lake. Paul English at two oh six had to be very creative when he combined houses to build his current home because he likewise faced limitations imposed by zoning. Most recently, Amy Bernstein and Nanette Fisher limited the addition to two fourteen to ensure that the house didn't block the view from two sixteen and was to scale in the neighborhood. I do not believe that different rules should be applied in considering this proposed addition to two twelve, which is the smallest of these lots, where such a drastic increase in scale would be most noticeable. Finally, a couple uh points um related to uh what applicants mentioned. Um, the, the point about uh whether their ground floor should be considered a floor or a basement. They are on the same hill as mine, same slope. My ground floor is living quarters. Their ground floor, which I have seen, I would assume will also be considered living quarters. But I am obviously not the decision maker here. Finally, as to their, we have gone uh in quite a lot of detail about the unique driveway that they would have to use for demolition and then rebuild. Um, applicants mentioned that they are, because of the challenges, looking for an alternative. The only alternative of which I'm aware is my driveway. And they have repeatedly asked the hearts whether they could use that driveway because the hearts share the driveway with me. So two oh eight and two ten share the driveway along the property line for two sixteen, two fourteen and two twelve. And it's a straight shoot. And if they were allowed to do that and were allowed to demolish landscaping, uh they could uh bring a concrete truck in there. However, the hearts uh assured me that although um they've gotten this request multiple times, they had zero interest in allowing this, nor do I. And my leasehold does include the driveway. Um, therefore, that would not be an alternative for this project. I'm unaware of other alternatives. Where I'm from in Florida, we bring concrete in uh sometimes by uh barge. I, I don't think that's possible on spy pond. So I think the only way that they will be able to bring concrete to this home is through this very sinuous driveway. I thank you for your time and attention and just ask that you consider all the many points that I have raised and that my neighbors have raised.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Steve Moore?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Steve Moore, Piedmont Street. Um, I have to start off by apologizing. I was not able to uh join the meeting until quite a bit late. And this, my questions may have already been answered by the presentation provided by the applicant. So I apologize in advance if that's the case. Um, in looking at the submissions, uh, I've been trying to uh figure out whether or not this project's going to require the taking of uh any of the protected trees and the setbacks. I, I couldn't really tell about trees on the property, except that I looked at uh aerial views on Google Maps. And it looks like there are trees. I don't know what property they are on, since the property lines here are odd to say the least and close to the abutting properties. Um, so, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask for you, um, is there a tree plan? Are there trees to be taken? And if, uh, also, what are the plans they have for protection of trees to do this rather large uh target?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moore. Miss Aikenhead, do you have an answer to that?
Okay, so, yes, I do. We uh have a couple of big trees down by Spy Pond, some willows, which we are going to protect as, as required by the notice of intent issued by the Conservation Commission. And we are going to retain. We did contact the tree warden and he did say that that there, we, we don't have any trees in the setback, basically. The only two big trees we have are down below. And he said, I'd, I'd have to look at the exact language, but it doesn't apply to us. We do intend to make the landscape better and to plant trees, but there's just a couple of trees down there right now to save, which we are saving. And I don't know, um. At some point, I have a couple of things that I just want to mention related to previous comments, but I want to wait, I don't know how to, we can't get our raise the hand function going. So just if you can note that for later.
It'll be okay. I'll, I'll, I'll come back to you and give you an opportunity to, to address, I think, not the opportunity so much as that it will be helpful to everyone if, if you can address some of the comments that have taken place. But Mr. Moore still has the floor, so let me cut back to him.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'm glad you contracted the tree warden. He would have the say as to whether or not you had to do any of uh those protections. So that, that's uh, that's excellent that, that, that occurred. Um, I, I would, uh, I have one question that the video that was being shown by one of the uh, one of the folks giving um some comments here showed a, a, a tree truck in there doing some tree work. I don't know if that was on this property or a neighboring property. Uh, if it was on this property that we're looking at uh under this application, I would inquire as to what was the nature of the tree work being done at that time? Mr. Chair?
I'm not sure whether Ms. Naked, Aikenhead can answer that or I think uh.
I can answer that.
Okay.
So after we got the okay from the Conservation Commission, we had marquee tree come in. The bulk of their work was pruning back um branches that were overhanging the house, which we had the okay to do and removing some of the invasives, which were down below. They pruned the bigger willows that are down by Spy Pond, but only minimally so that they would be in keeping with the Conservation Commission permission. And there was a giant yew bush near the house that they cut down. If I can add some.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chair, that, that helps. Um, what, what were the size of the invasives that were removed?
I mean, I can't answer that right now. I'd have to go back and look. They were small. But I'd have to go back and look at my notes for marquee tree and my notes on the property. We did have an ecological plan by Parter Ecological that called out what was invasive and what wasn't. They were relatively small, but I can't give you. I mean, I can't give you the exact figures right here, right now. I can send them in later.
Okay, well, uh, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Chair. I um, I, I bring it up only because um one of the issues that we've had in the past with um additions and permits being required for projects like this is tree work is done in advance of the application. Um, and then suddenly there's not an issue for what the application covers that could have been issued prior to that tree work being done in advance of the application, which is an unfortunate occurrence. Protected trees on the property, I think probably at the time, were uh eight inches and larger in diameter, breast height. Uh, and uh the law has since been changed to six inches. But in, in the fact that they were invasive is not really a mitigating factor. Uh, if they were large adult trees that provided shade and uh environmental mitigation, it's something that we watch. So I wanted to make sure the applicant was aware of that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Right. Ms. Snake, Aikenhead, if I, if I can remember what you said, the only thing was actually it was removed was the yew tree. The others were just pruned back.
That is correct.
Uh, so I think you said.
It weren't eight inches DBH, it was branches.
One inch, two inch.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, Ms. Chair. I thought I heard a comment about invasors being taken. Maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah, yeah, they were, they were like bushes, little thing.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Applicants for the info.
Is there any else who wishes to address this application at this time? Is there any else who wishes to address this application at this time?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hi, this is Sarah Radigan. I I apologize. I I couldn't raise my hand on the Zoom function, so. Um I'm just speaking out, but thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Give your address as well, please. Your name and address.
Yes, um I'm I'm an attorney with Trilogy Law and my address is twelve Marshall Street in Boston. And um I am here um assisting, representing um John Garber. Uh and his wife, who are the ones who spoke um initially and who live in the property at two fourteen. Uh Pleasant Street. Um which is the property just uh right behind uh two twelve Pleasant Street where the house uh addition is being proposed. Um I I wanted to comment on a couple of things and I'll try to keep this brief because you've obviously heard a lot of testimony. Um and I've been keeping notes furiously, trying to keep up with some really uh strong comments from from the neighbors, but. Um the first thing I wanted to point out, um you had you had asked a few of the folks about when they got notice of this hearing. Um I suspect uh this has happened um to me for clients in in Cambridge as well. But the U S Post Office is not what it used to be. Um and um we've been hearing um difficult stories of people getting noticed, uh you know, much too close to a hearing. Date in order to be able to scramble to find um you know, information and counsel. And so, one, I have to apologize. I have just barely been getting myself up to speed in the past two hours just to be able to. Provide some assistance to these clients, but. Um I hope that this board will take seriously the request for a continuance, at least. In order to allow for a little more time to digest information. Um but there are also some technical questions that you've raised already. Um but I I just want to um follow with a couple more. Um some of these, again, may be because of my unfamiliarity. Honestly, with the Arlington uh zoning. Um but just a couple of things, so. Um we have on the list of questions um whether or not the basement counts as a story. And it seems like the applicant has said, you know, we should go back and speak to the building commissioner, uh building inspector. And have them make a determination. I wasn't able to understand by looking at a cross section of the plans with the average grade. Um I wasn't able to, you know, pick up a ruler and and figure out how that aligned with the ordinance. But that's obviously really really critical. Um because if it is a story. Then the their request is a variance, and I think that there's there's no set of facts that would show that they're entitled to a variance. It obviously would be a different application altogether. Um the other thing. Um we were talking about the open space, usable open space. Um the only thing, it it there is a lot of. Um area on the lot, but there is also a very sharp, uh well, uh I'm not sure. I haven't been there, but from looking at the plan. It appears that there's a pretty sharp, steep drop down to the water. Um and the I believe usable open space includes a definition that requires. That at least seventy-five percent of the area has a grade of less than eight percent. I'm not quite sure what it eight percent, I mean, eight percent is relatively steep, but I think that. When they're when they're double checking those calculations, I'd ask that that someone pay attention to that. Um piece of the of the um puzzle. Um because again, it it impacts whether or not this is a variance or a special permit. Um. At a minimum, also, I would hope that the applicant would be able to provide. Some more information to this board and to the neighbors about. Um the actual impact of the changes when seen. Um from the viewpoints of the very closest neighbors. And um if you wouldn't mind me sharing my screen, I just wanted to show a couple of photos, if that's all right.
That would be all right.
Okay, thank you very much, and I'll I'll keep this quick.
So have you provided her with Ms. Radigan with the permission to do that?
She should be awesome.
Okay.
Yes, and let me just see if I am able to do this. Um let's see. And I want to show you something. I don't want to show you, right? Let's see if I can do this. Uh nope, that's not what you want to see. Apologize, let me try again. Nope. And try one more time. Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. Okay. So um this is just a Google Earth view. Um which I thought would be helpful. I don't capture all of the neighbors who spoke today, but. Um the red dot is the uh two twelve Pleasant Street lot, and you can see the modest size of the existing home. Um this is uh two fourteen Pleasant Street. Uh the folks who I represent, you've heard from people who live all around the surrounding area. Um here is an assessor map view of the same thing, which I thought was helpful because. Um what's missing from any of the plans provided is um. An indication of the distance between the buildings. I don't think, you know, these G I S maps are often not super accurate. It would be really helpful if the surveyor could run, could just shoot a line to where the nearest. Um walls of the neighboring house. Houses are on each side that are going to be impacted by the by the development. And the last thing I wanted to do is just to show you some photos that are taken from um. From the windows of uh my client's home. Um so this is the house that's going to be um enlarged significantly. This is a photo from the upstairs bedroom. Again, from the upstairs. John, please correct me if I'm getting any of this wrong. Again, from the upstairs of the building. This is from the back deck. So this is the existing home, and you can imagine, I mean, just look at the, this is a, you know, small little cottage. This is what they look at. From their deck, and this is just gives you a sense of the proximity. Another view. So the addition, now, if you're looking at this house, the addition is going to extend out to the right. And um be two stories. So this entire view of the pond will be gone. Just another view of the same. And here's another view from inside the building. Sorry, the only corrections are that previous photo was not from the deck, that was from the 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 family room inside. This this photo right here?
Correct.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks for for clarifying that. So um just a couple of things um in addition, so. There has been a lot of talk about um impact on the neighbors in terms of of negative, you know, substantial impact. On um on all the things that, you know, your zoning ordinance are meant to protect against. Um we've talked about views, light, air, noise issues, cramped feelings of. You know, over overcrowding and density, all of these things, of course, being relative to the neighborhood that we're in. Um we've talked about concerns about quality of life, impacts on the access to the site. Um including this uh unique driveway easement. Um concerns about um privacy, blocking light, as we mentioned before. There's also some concerns about um impacts on shared utilities. And I think that the real hope is that. Um you know, we often hope that these conversations happen before a zoning hearing. Um but if there's a continuance, that hopefully there's a chance to open a dialogue and um. And talk about some modifications to these plans that that uh that might be more acceptable. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Radigan. Is there anything else? Anyone else who eager is, I don't see anyone else with a hand raised. It's going once, going twice. Uh we'll close, well, I'm next, we're going to close the public hearing quite. Let's let's uh let um. Miss uh he can have have an opportunity to respond to. Or to clarify, do whatever she would do, what she would like to do in response to the what she has just heard.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that opportunity. I'm not going to comment on every single thing. There's a lot of stuff said. There's a few. Things that are really critical that I comment on, and they happen to do with my integrity and my communication. So we have sent out four separate notices to all these neighbors. One from the Conservation Commission, which I sent myself certified mail. One from the Historic District Commission, which they sent themselves certified mail. One was the Good Neighbors. A notice which is required to be sent as a part of a permanent application, which I sent myself certified mail. And then the notice for this hearing. The first notice was sent out last, I think it was May or June of twenty twenty-two. And all of the plans, including the addition and the second floor, were. It's the exact same outside as they are today. We have tweaked the inside somewhat. But the outside plans haven't changed since then. And I would like to note for the record that before we had any hearings or sent any notices. We emailed all three of the neighbors that are here personally, and we met on the driveway with our plans. To discuss with them what we were hoping to do. So they have known for many, 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 many months, and nothing has changed. And I can produce documentation if need be. That's the most important thing. The second thing that I'd like to address is this note, this. Notice that we're, that this is an integrated neighborhood and we are not part of it. We are neighbors. We live about a five-minute walk away, right up the hill, and our intention is to move down to that house when it's finished. We are not flippers. We are not from some other neighborhood. We're Arlington residents that live in that neighborhood. Those are, that's my, do you want to say something?
Yeah, there was never throughout all the months where these plans were made available and discussed in person with us in the driveway. Uh there was never any kind of communication back to us about any objection of any kind throughout the.
Like, this is a shocker. No.
Conservation Commission review, Historic District. So it's kind of surprising that this is now, uh suddenly. Uh all these issues are suddenly coming uh before us.
Yeah, so so the first public meeting we had was Conservation Commission. Several neighbors were on, and I I forget the exact comments. We've had two public Historic District Commission.
Ms. Aikenhead. We can't.
Multiple times. We see the neighbors, zero. Have we heard, zero. Sorry, okay. Yeah, yeah, okay, fine. So, okay, so. My main point is, we have talked to them, we have communicated. I'm fine that they, I understand that they object. But we have, but I want to be super clear that if there's some issue with the driveway and it's damaged, we're going to fix it. Uh that was one big objection. I think that's that that's the main stuff for now, I guess.
Thank you. So let me close the public hearing now. Um this is the appropriate point for the board to uh. Uh discuss this uh and but before we do that. I have the sense from listening to and I'm eager to see whether my colleagues agree. Uh but between getting straight with the building department on whether the basement counts as a story, which is something that we really can't do tonight. Um and the various uh the the. Offer to go out and see the property more and to look at it. I will say that from my own point of view, I almost invariably go out and look. But because this doesn't have a public, isn't publicly accept accessible in a way that's very obvious. Uh I was not able to do that uh uh in this one. Uh others may have may have persevered uh uh beyond that, but a lot has been aired tonight. Uh and I think that uh the board may uh benefit from the opportunity to uh go out and to. Uh see if all of the property owners uh there are prepared to have. Us as intruders in in their neighborhood, but I would certainly feel a great deal more comfort comfortable. If instead of looking at pictures, we got a greater feel for what is going on at that site. And the time between now and then may be an opportunity for uh Ms. Radigan and her clients to get together with the applicant and. Perhaps clear the air a little bit and see whether there are any possibilities of uh. Of coming up with something that will work for both sides, for all sides. Uh and and hopefully not require going back through the Conservation Commission and the Historic District Commission and. Going through the procedure all over again, but there certainly is a reason to talk. Uh and I think there's a sense of a willingness of people to talk. Uh if this project goes through. You all will be neighbors and you all be living together and you probably will hope. That the memory of of this particular night isn't going to spoil your relations going forward. So with that said, I open up to the board. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this application? Well, seeing none. Um.
Mister, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I had my microphone turned off. If I could, I just had a couple of comments. One is I'm in complete agreement with you. I think it would be wonderful to have the opportunity. I, like you, drove by and couldn't figure out where the property was. And if you stop uh too long on Pleasant Street, you're liable to be rear-ended, so I was pretty careful about that. I I would, I have a couple of questions if I may, because I think that there are a lot of issues that have been raised. And I just had two very quick questions for um the applicant. Um and I think I know the answers, but it, could I just ask, um it, will the setbacks change between? The property where you're going to be building? I think it's uh as it relates to two fourteen and. Um two, is it two sixteen? Because I know that there was a comment made by Mr. Garber in the very beginning about how close the property is. Your structure is to his structure, and it wasn't really with reference to the setback. It was really, I think, the distance between the structures. So is your building going to cause the. Building that you propose to be any closer to the Garber property?
No, it is not.
And similarly, on the side where you're going to be putting that addition. Um if it's, if it's going to be closer to that abutting property, is it still going to be within the setback requirements?
Yes, we meet all the. Be about five feet closer to the property at a, which is two eighteen, but well within the required setback.
Okay, and then I would just note that I know that there are a number of things that have been. Uh raised as concerns by the neighbors, and if we're going to have this hiatus between now and another meeting. I do think obviously the issue with regard to the construction and the driveway is something I'd like to. Hear some more about with regard to damage, but also with regard to pedestrian safety. Because I do think that that's an issue, especially if it's narrow and it's not a great sightlines. Um the other thing is, I'm assuming that even if you do. Increase the amount of parking, you're not going to interfere with that easement. Down to Spy Pond that was cited earlier. Because you can't legally, but I assume you're not going to.
We are not going to. We could, but there's very little, the the whole, it's basically all paved parking anyway. We're just going to square it off a little bit. There's going to be. Essentially no change, and we are not going to interfere with that easement.
And if I may, one more thing that was raised. And and I think it's something that I'm not sure it's addressed as part of the process. But obviously, that sewer line strain is an issue. I don't know if that's part of what you've been. Talking to the building department about. So I'm not asking you to give us any sort of information about that. But when we come back the next time, that may be something that we want to talk about.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dupont. Is there any, Mr. Braheed Ali, Ms. Hoffman?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wicked.
Hmm, I'm in agreement with, um I just kind of wanted to echo what you said um about the um. Confirmation of the 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 basement story. Uh and uh as well as the slope of the grade and the usable opens, because I think that, you know, those are sort of the two critical. Things that we need to um just understand uh before we we vote on this on this project. And um I do um I do agree with uh Ms. Radigan's um. Comments about, you know, it would be helpful um if we just knew. Um from the survey, you know, where the adjacent properties are, so if. If that's something that would be possible, uh while you have someone confirming the grade. I I think that, you know, it would go a long way to just helping us understand on the site plan uh the relationships.
So the site plan, they, we have a full survey right now. It has all the setbacks on every side of the building, and it has all the grades as well. The usable open space that we calculated is all behind the house and that is all very level. The drop is on the side of the house and then it's down and the backyard is not dead flat, but pretty close to level. I think the information that you need on the survey, I'd be happy to provide a full-size copy if you need that.
Um, maybe, you, you know, it may just be, um, just so a little hard to read, but maybe we could just, uh, you know, identify that, for next time. So it's very clear for the, may, maybe just a line or something on the, on the plan so that we can all see it for the next year.
Yeah.
I wonder, mistaken head, if it's possible for you could just, to just take up the plot plan when you, in the place where you're making the calculations and just color in the parts of that, that you're actually including, because I think what you're suggesting is that forgetting the contours and anything like that, you have, what you're taking into consideration already is not the steeply sloped spaces. So we don't have to worry about that. But assuming that that's true, the best way to show that would be just to sort of shade in the part that's sloped and say this isn't what we're considering and, and that the rest of it still adds up to the, the three thousand square feet or whatever, whatever it was in the calculation.
Yeah, I can, I, I actually did that, but I think it came through to you in kind of black and white. So I'll do it, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so seeing no, no further discussion, uh, Chair will entertain a motion to, if it's the sense of the board to do this, to, uh, can, continue this case, uh, until the date certain of March twenty-eighth at seven o'clock. Uh, or excuse me, at seven thirty or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard.
So moved.
So move by Mister Dupont, second.
Second.
Second, then Mister Rico Deli. Um, we'll go through the rule, Mister Dupont.
Aye.
Mister Rico Deli.
Aye.
Miss Hoffman.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye and the matters continue. Thank you very much, everyone, for your participation. It's been a enlightening and I hope a useful discussion, certainly for the board and I hope for all of you as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next, uh, as soon as my mouse comes off strike and will begin to move so I can look at the agenda. Then so the next case in the order of things is, uh, is seventy-five Dawson. I would like to, let's see, um, yeah, the applicant is here. I, we, we talked to them earlier on quite a lot, long time ago.
Still here.
Would you mind terribly much? I'd like to be able, I'm not sure, do you have, are you going to be presenting yourself? Do you have a professional here to present for you?
No, it's just us.
If, if you would be, I would, if you would be so kind, uh, the next case up, uh, the last one is Hobbs Court and that's being, uh, presented by, uh, uh, by, uh, Mister Anessi and, uh, it would be, it might be helpful at least to the applicants there if they don't have to pay Mister for Mr. Anessi's time for one more case. Uh, so with your consent, I'd like to take him first and, and leave you to, to back clean up. Is that okay with you?
Yeah, I'm, I, will we get a chance tonight or?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I'm just trying to, to do, since as a former lawyer, I'm, I'm, I'm very attuned to efforts to diminish legal fees and, uh, usually I oppose those things, but, but this, times different now. So, but yes, you, you'll, you'll be given a chance and I'm hoping this later, this case will not be, uh, will not last quite as long as we, we've had before. Mister Anessi, uh, the, the case that we'll call, uh, Doc at thirty-seven, thirty-four, twelve, twenty Hobbs Court.
Yes.
And
Mister Chairman. Mister Hanlon.
Yes.
Hi, it's, uh, it's, uh, Christian Klein, I'm gonna let you know I'm here.
Klein is jumping in. I have to defer to him.
I have to let you know I'm here.
Okay, so Mister Klein is, is here as, as well. Christian, if you want to step back into the chair, you're welcome to do that.
You're, you're doing so well. I'm, I'm more than happy to let you proceed.
All right, then Mister Anessi, uh, why don't you explain what it is that your client would like to do?
Yes, uh, I am here representing Mike Hines, who, and Mike is the prospective purchaser of the real estate located at Twenty Hobbs Court in Arlington. Uh, Twenty Hobbs Court is real estate located in an I-zone. Now, uh, Mister Hines had operated, uh, an auto body shop at thirty-four Dudley Street, uh, for some years, going back, I believe, to, uh, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, and that was the auto body shop that been op, that had been operated for many years by Ed Whalen. And when Ed Whalen, uh, passed away, uh, the property got sold, but the body shop, uh, use continued. So what subsequently happened was, uh, Mister Hines, uh, sold his thirty-four Dudley Street property, again in an I-zone, to, uh, Thirty-four Dudley Street LLC, not to be redundant, uh, which was a storage, which is a storage facility. And I represented that LLC before the ARB and they got permission to construct, uh, eight hundred and fifty storage units at Thirty-four Dudley Street LLC. So now, uh, Mister Hines needs a location and he loves being in Arlington. He's been in the business since nineteen fifty-nine, by the way, uh, and he has, uh, a son and I believe a grandson as well, who are in the business, uh, the, the son is third generation at this point. And what he would like to do is open up an operation at Twenty Hobbs Court and have the son basically, uh, run that operation. Now, he's got other operations as well in some other cities and towns. And a couple of those, a minority operated, uh, by women. Uh, they own at least twenty-five percent of the interest in the LLCs. Uh, and they've been operating very nicely for many years. Now, what has the property at Twenty Hobbs Court been used for, uh, for the last number of years? It's been used for a landscape business. And, uh, if anybody had that occasion to ever drive down Hobbs Court and take a look at the property, they would have seen barbed wire above the fence. They would have seen windows with, that were eliminated, uh, and, and filled in with cement. And the building would have had the appearance of a fortress. What my client is proposing to do is to change all of that. He wants to put the building back in the, uh, condition that it looked like, uh, before all of this ever happened. And he's gonna talk to you about that momentarily. The, uh, the hours of operation for the, uh, new, uh, body shop, uh, 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 business would be eight in the morning until six at night. He'd have twelve employees. And if you viewed the dimensional form, uh, the dimensional form shows he has ample parking, uh, ample parking onsite. Uh, he's going to do some landscaping out front on the site as well. And, uh, he's going to talk to you, uh, momentarily, uh, about what happens with respect to the, uh, the spray painting operation, which is going to be located in the back of the building. Uh, that spray paint, uh, 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 operation is going to be, uh, self-contained. Uh, there's not going to be excessive noise. Uh, there's not going to be, uh, any undue aroma in the neighborhood. And by the way, I point out to you that if you go to the bylaw, the definition for an I-zone, uh, suits my client's property immaculately. And that is the industrial district in the Millbrook Valley allows uses requiring the manufacturing, assembly, processing, or handling of materials, which because of their traffic, noise, appearance, odor, or hazardous, uh, would be disruptive to residential and other business uses. Now, uh, my suggestion to you is we don't fit any of those categories. But if we did, then we would be okay, because that's what the master plan and that's what the bylaw contemplates for an I-zone. That's what an I-zone is all about. So, uh, again, with respect to, uh, the, what's gonna happening, uh, be happening internally in the building, I'm gonna let Mike talk to that right now. Mike, are you there?
I am.
Good. Why don't you jump in, Mike?
All right. Thanks for the time tonight. Um, give you a little background on myself, which Bob just did, is that I've been in the auto body business my whole life. And it's actually my father started it in sixty, in nineteen fifty-nine. And we've have several locations and pride ourselves in being owner-operated. And when I say that, when I say my son, um, has been running Dudley Street since, for the last five years, we'd say. And he's become very, he enjoys working in Arlington. He enjoys the people. And the fact that we felt that there's a chance that we might not have got another location in Arlington was really, it's been a, it's a tough road. And we came across Hobbs Court and feel that it's a perfect fit and probably about the only fit. Because you, it's a sixty-six hundred square foot building with plenty of parking. And that's very odd, uh, these days when you're looking for, um, locations. So as I said, when we're owner-oper, owner-operated and it's, we're a family business and, you know, and we're a good neighbor. So when I go in there, I, I look at it, my job is how am I gonna make this building look like, like a good neighbor would leave it or like I wanna call a village look. And that is to put new windows in, doors that are, you know, are, are nice to look at. And landscaping, uh, the, the big thing over there is, um, the rusty chain link, the barbed wire. You don't need barbed wire anymore these days. You know, you take it all, taking it down, put in black vinyl, just give, making the curb appeal that which would be neighborhood friendly. Um, we are a company that, that we, we hire, we train people, we hire people, we train them, we promote them. And as they go along, they can become partners. And that's happened in three of my shops. Um, prior to this, we have one in Belmont, which, um, I actually hadn't mentioned to Bob, we had won an award from the Belmont Trade. And it was because we took an old ugly body shop and we turned it into something that was a nice shop to look at. And that was on Fletch Fleet, Fletch Street in, in Belmont, right off of Tripolo across from the CBS. So there's, we don't have to change the footprint of the building. All we are going to do is we're gonna put in new windows in the front, which were there before. Um, we'll put in an, an office on the left side with glass windows and the inside stays the same. The only real piece of equipment we put in would be a spray booth, which is going to be factory installed by a factory-approved, um, dealer. It's auto-equipped. They've been in the business for fifty years and, um, have done every one of my shops and, um, I've never had an issue. Um, and it's, they have all their own filtration systems and, um, and I think that's probably, as far as, the other item that we were going to be doing is we were going to be putting, adding two doors on the parking lot side of the building. And the reason for that is so we'd be able to operate within our own footprint. So meaning pull, not having to pull out onto the street to pull into the building, that we'd be able to get in and out with ease and not be a burden to anybody driving by. The other items we had is the signage. We keep it simple and conservative. Um, usually just, you know, white stainless, I mean, uh, silver stainless steel letters. Nothing fancy, no neon or any of that landscape, you know, as, as appropriate. And, um, you know, just, just make it a, a, a good-looking building. Run us our business, a nice, clean, neighborhood-friendly business.
Okay, thank you, Mister.
I think we can show the signage, uh, if we can, uh.
Mister Anessi, one of the things that I think that we need to, just to pause here about is that, as you know, the signage in, since for the last several years has been exclusively under the jurisdiction of the ARB. And I think that we're not in a position, uh, and don't have the jurisdiction to approve the sign plan, that that has to be done by the other body.
All right, that's fine. We'll take it to planning and have them take a look at it, uh, not the ARB necessarily, Mister Hanlon.
Yes.
We don't think that we, uh, need ARB approval, but we do need planning board, uh, approval, we believe. Uh, so we'll do that for sure. Uh, the couple of other things that, uh, uh, as Mike mentioned, the only reason we're here is it's change of use, okay? Uh, we don't need any zoning relief, uh, we're not changing the footprint of the building in any way. Now, I spoke personally, uh, with David Morgan of the Conservation Commission, because we are in close proximity to the book. And I asked, uh, Mister Morgan, do we have any issue with the Conservation Commission? And he responded, you do not, Bob. Uh, I had, uh, Mike talk with Wayne Shannard, the town engineer, uh, with respect to any potential engineering issue. And Wayne indicated that so long as we're not changing anything as far as the footprint of the building, we do not have any issue with his department as well. So again, the only matter I believe before the board, uh, is the, uh, issue with respect to change of use. I would suggest to the members of the board that, uh, this zone is an ideal zone for the body shop operation. And I'm also going to suggest to the members of the board that a lot of the clients and customers of the body shop operation come from Arlington, uh, from the town of Arlington and not necessarily from, uh, outlying cities and towns. So I believe that this would be, uh, a decided benefit to continue to have, uh, this well-known and, and well-operated body shop operation, to have an alternative location in the town and perhaps to go on with the younger Mister Hines for as many years as Dad and Grandpa have gone on as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, are there, at the, this point, are there any of the, are there any questions, uh, or comments from the board?
Mister Chair.
Mister Klein.
Thank you. Um, so I, I'm, I'm glad to see, um, you know, this industrial use in the industrial district, I think is a good location for it. Uh, apart from the possible confusion over being Dudley Street, uh, auto on Hobbs Court. You know, that's, you're gonna have to train your, train your customers on that. Um, I did want to just briefly touch on the, um, the site plan and I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, share this. So, um, so this is the plan that was, that's provided in the packet from, this is the architect's plan. And the civil, the plan from Rover Survey, um, it's rotated relative, but the, the site plan from Rover doesn't include a lot of the landscape notations that are on the architectural plan. And, uh, acro, directly across the street, there is a, uh, an R-five district, so residential five district with, um, a large development of residences. And so that if this was a new construction, uh, there is a buffer requirement that's a twenty-five foot buffer that would be required between the two, where this is an existing site and existing use, you're not changing the building. It's really just a request for, for use. The board's not in a position to impose the buffer. But I, I would, what I see in the architectural plans, I'm very gratified to see where it, it looks like there's intend, it, it's intended to be improvements to the land. It's intended to be improvements to the landscaping that is facing the residential district. And and you had mentioned during your presentation that you were looking to remove. The chain link fence, remove the the barbed wire from the top. And provide a different kind of fence surrounding the property. I think all those are 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 great things and they will help to. I was going to say they would help, they sort of help mitigate the change in use, but you know, there's not really a mitigation necessarily. Required the prior. Tenant did a lot more work outside because they operated a landscaping yard on the side where this will. You know, in this case, most things will be occurring inside. I would be interested in getting a little more specificity on. What the, what the intentions are for the for the landscaping and the fencing so that the board has a. You know, has has it in writing exactly what what that plan is? I think that would be helpful, helpful to the board. And I also appreciate that you had mentioned in your presentation that you were adding a side garage door. To allow the movement of vehicles more easily into and out of the building and the parking lot. I know the adjacent tenant closer to the to Millbrook is another is another large automotive. Use, they park cars all over on Millbrook Street. And so I just wanted to confirm with you that your intention is that you would be maintaining all the vehicles. That you are servicing on your property.
Absolutely. One of the things about it, there is a substantial amount of parking there for an operation our size. So I I don't see any reason why anybody would be parking out there and I did notice that myself. And, you know, driving to the property.
Mike, with respect to the landscaping, at least depicted on the architectural plan. Am I talking out of school by indicating that that is what we're proposing to do?
Yeah, there's already, there's already a substantial amount of, they're like Abervite, you know, Great American Abervites, about six feet tall. And I I like, I kind of like the look of them because, you know, it's nice to have a little bit of. You know, it's nice to have a body shop if your car's damaged, but sometimes to have it sheltered by a natural. You know, by a natural type of wall there of of trees sometimes is also nice for the neighbors, not necessarily for us. And I'm very aware of that, having done quite quite a few auto body shops. So some of them are already there. I think there's like six or seven of them and they're got to be at least eight feet tall.
So are the, the proposed land, the the way that the landscaping is drawn on this plan is? Is that how it's existing laid out?
I'm going to say three quarters of it is. And I had planned on. Because even like there's a gate on that one side of it. And I'm not really sure there's a need for, you know, a a a gate to be operated there so much. So I had planned on pretty much kind of self-containing that area.
And you had said you were looking to do. I think, I think Mr. Nessie has said a a black vinyl fence.
Change the chain, the chain link from the ugly kind of, you know, the rusty to like the black vinyl. Which would be chain link and then what you'd put is you'd put kind of black slats in it. And the black blends into the, you know, to the background as opposed to rust or a different color.
And what would be the height of the fence?
What's what's currently there now, so, you know, again. It's it's not for secu- really for security reasons because it really isn't a security issue. It's just to probably divide the property. So whatever is there, you you cut, you take down the barb, the the barbed wire aspect of it. Cap it off and then just kind of paint all the poles that are there black and then put the new vinyl on it. I mean, there's no, there's no need in having a twenty-foot fence or. Because it's just, it's just not the case these days and maybe in the seventies and eighties. People were breaking into auto shops, but that really doesn't happen anymore.
Currently at the back edge of the parking lot, there is a. Sort of a rather substantial wall built up. Out of sort of oversized concrete blocks. Is that intended to remain or is that going to be removed?
You know, I I was asked that and I think it also it makes a good divider. I mean, it obviously takes up a little bit of space. But I was planning on probably leaving it because it's just kind of a nice way to privatize. Unless there was some negative about it, which I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see any. And I just felt it was a good somewhat dividing line and that's obviously left over from the previous owners.
And then the only other question I have is so on the spray booth itself, are there? Any ventilation? That that's come out through the through the roof?
Yeah, it's all filtered. It it gets, we use water-based paint. So that's all regulated by the DEP, obviously, and the spray booth is approved by. You know, all the regulations when we buy it, that's the idea of when that we have it installed. It's by a certified factory, which there should be documentation showing you that he's a factory rep for the. The for the manufacturer.
And anything that's coming through the roof, there's nothing that's unusually tall about any of those components.
There's a, there'd be a vent that would come out, but it's whatever the. What whatever the the code is. I mean, it's not gonna, not sound like a chimney or anything, you know?
Okay, yeah, that was more of my concern. Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much for the questions.
Are there any other questions from the board? Right, seeing that this is a public hearing. We announced the general rules for good conduct earlier on. And I don't think see any need to repeat them now. Is there anybody here who'd like to address this project, Mr. Moore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Steve Moore, Edmont Street. A question for you to the applicant. In in reviewing the documents, it looks like the the carless, which are there are going to be movable and not embedded. So I assume they're worm gear. Floor mounted carless.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And I was wondering, what is the age of the existing buildings?
The, um, the other building. Got to be, I'm guessing it's got to be what nineteen? I would say nineteen twenty, I'm I'm guessing.
I think it's in the nineteen twenties sometime.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, the the one thing I note here that that, I mean, it's it it looks like it's an excellent use. And it's perfect for the I-zone and it sounds like the applicant is going to some great lengths to restore. The aesthetic aspect of things. So that's that's great to hear. My concern is that this. Looks based on the older site plan that it but it a buts or is even over the building is over part of Millbrook. It's hard to tell. And. With that age, I just want to point out that. I'm sure the building, it, oh, there may be cracks in it and such and. I would caution the applicant to be. Very attentive to making sure that any. Off flow from this property. And from the automotive use building is is definitely carefully watched and not allowed to somehow. End up in Millbrook, which has had historical significant pollution problems from the I-zones which went up to it. During its length of the breadth of the town. And and I just would. I would suggest that the applicant be very careful in in making sure that that nothing ends up in Millbrook. Be it in liquid form or or. You know, solid, solid waste form by mistake. Certainly, the captain would never try and do such a thing on purpose. But I I I would hope that we're careful that way now. I thank you, Mr. Chair, for putting that up on the screen. It's just hard to tell for me whether or not the Millbrook is buried and in a pipe at that point. Or or it's under on posts and and so I was concerned about that.
We're well aware of that issue, Mr. Moore, and that's the reason we talked to David Morgan about it. Of course, of the Conservation Commission. He did not see an issue. And he pretty much said the same thing that Wayne Shannard said. If you're not going to be doing anything to change the footprint, that helps. But we're going to be aware of the fact that we can't do a thing to. Bring pollution to the brook. The brook is sacrosanct in this town and we know that.
You know, also, the brook is on that, if you're looking at that picture there on that left back side. And there is no access outside of the building from that side. So, of course, you know, obviously you would respect the, and you'd have to be an idiot not to. But there isn't any real activity that would go on in that area. If you notice when I said about opening it up and if you look to the right of the building where all the. That's where your cars go in and out. You're not going to have really any type of. Activity on that, on that side of the property from us at least.
Thank you. I I appreciate that and it sounds like you're going to be quite attentive to. Any conditions that might develop that would. Be negatively impacting the book. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there anyone else who's wishes to address this application? I don't see anyone with their hands up. Going once, going twice, close the public hearing. I turn to the board. Are there any further comments or questions relating to this application? If the board is inclined to grant the application. Probably want to do so in accordance with the standard conditions. Which are as follows, standard condition number one is the. Plans and specifications approved by the board for the special permit shall be the final plans and specifications. Submitted to the building inspector of the town of Arlington in connection with this application for zoning relief. There shall be no deviation during construction from approved plans and specifications. Without the express written approval of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. Standard two. The building inspectors, inspector is hereby noticed that he is to monitor the site. And should proceed with appropriate enforcement procedures at any time he determines that violations are present. The building inspector shall proceed under section three point one of the zoning by law and under the provisions of chapter forty. Section twenty-one D of the Massachusetts General Laws and Institute Non-Criminal Complaints. If necessary, the building inspector may also approve and institute appropriate criminal action. Also in accordance with section three point one. And standard three, the board shall maintain continuing jurisdiction with respect to the special permit. Are there any members of the boards who believe that additional? Conditions would be necessary or appropriate?
I was looking to prepare a. A condition just in regards to the landscaping and the fence because those are not otherwise referenced in the application.
So what would you, what would you want that to say?
Visibly scribbling.
Mr. Nessie, while Mr. Klein is scribbling, I wonder if there was. It did come up at one point that that your intention was to keep all the vehicles on site. I was a little unclear whether that meant just the vehicles that are being worked upon or whether that meant also the vehicles of employees. Could you clarify that?
Mike?
Yeah, yeah, that would, that would be yes.
Okay, and I take, let me ask if we imposed a condition that said something to the effect that. All vehicles of employees and customers will be parked, stored and serviced and serviced. On the property, that that would be appropriate?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Klein, I I've given you some time.
Okay. So I have two. Then, and and were you proposing what you had just discussed as a third?
I was, actually.
Okay. So what I had to put down was was the applicant is to provide landscaping in accordance with the January third, two thousand twenty-three. Proposed site plan by AD Architect. The applicant is to maintain the landscaping and replace any plantings which expire within a period of three years. That's sort of, that seems to be the standard term for landscaping that we have used on prior applications. And there was a, the existing fence is to be replaced with a black vinyl chain link fence not to exceed eight feet in height. With black infill slats for privacy. Judge Zett, Mr. Nessie, does that meet with what we had discussed?
Yeah, yes, it does.
And then, Mr. Hanlon, I believe you words was that.
Right, it says all vehicles of employees and customers will be parked, stored and serviced on the property.
Perfect.
Okay, are there any other conditions that that we should, we should consider?
I would just. Apologize, I just wanted to reference the questions that were posed by. The Department of Planning and Community Development. They had just asked two questions of us. One was. Regarding proper handling of noise fumes related industrial odors to be made specific conditions of any permit approvals. The property about residential uses, including the old Colony Apartments. So I know Mr. Nessie had. And the applicant indicated that, you know, this system is designed specifically. With that in mind, but. Do we feel, does the board feel that we should have a specific? Condition that just says the. See. Fumes and related industrial odors.
That's going to be so subjective.
Yeah, I suppose that's true. We just say applicant. To abide by all applicable. Regulations concerning. Emissions.
I'd like to just interject. It seems to me, excuse me. That all of this is so highly regulated either by DEP or whomever. That, you know, no, no permit for operation, I would think, would be issued if you didn't. You know, act in accord with those, so I I have no objection to putting in some general language like that, but I do think that it's. Going to be addressed in the normal course of business.
Well, I think in addition to that, if 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 the nature of the thing that we're proposing is that. Is that the applicant will will comply with all the other things. We haven't really added anything to the all the other things.
Right.
So I would then say the applicant to comply with all applicable regulation for the approved special permit use.
All right, that would be fine. Is there any, are there any, are there any other conditions?
And then they had the. The other question was have the applicant designate any spaces to be used for outdoor storage of undamaged operable automobiles. We had discussed that that was all just going to be in the yard, so I believe that that is addressed. So I have nothing further.
This point, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Klein.
I move that the board approve the. Special permit use. As, let's see, first point use as proposed for the this property with the three standard conditions. And the one, two, three, four additional conditions.
Second.
All right, seconded by uh Mr. DuPont. Um, are we, do we all understand what we're voting on? Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you so much for that nod of the head. It really is gonna help a lot. All right, uh, we'll call the roll. Uh, uh, Mr. DuPont.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Ricardelli?
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the motion carries. Um, the order, incidentally, was the order you all appeared on my screen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Markovitz, for, for yielding your pride of place here, and we're now getting to you. Um, Mr., uh, I, if Mr. Klein, I wonder if the chair has been sitting in this chair for a really long time and would appreciate it if the regular chair could take over for this last case.
Absolutely. Okay, so we are. This is, so now we're going back. This is item number four on our agenda for tonight, which is docket number three, seven, three, two, seventy-five Dalton Street. Um, so I would ask the applicants to introduce themselves. Do you have a, a presentation? Or would you like me to go ahead and pull up the plans?
Um, I've, I've got a small presentation. Um, I think it should be pretty quick. Um, but first of all, my name is Adam Markowitz. This is my wife, Jessica. Um, we're over at seventy-five Dauphin Street. We've been here for about fifteen years now, um slowly eking our way to our perfect home. Um, so uh if I could share my screen.
You should have that permission.
All right, let me just double check, and I do. Uh, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Sure. All right, yes. Um, okay, so basically what we're looking at here is uh, this is the, the plot plan for our, our yard. Uh, I want to point out that we do own both lot one eighty-two and lot one eighty-one B. Um, so that actually gives us sixty-seven feet of frontage. Um, and really what we're looking at is this small area right here. We want to add a small ten by six uh mudroom to the front of the house, um which will benefit us greatly uh with people not walking directly into our living room. Um, the, the issue that we're having is that uh we're currently twenty-eight feet back and adding six feet um to the front of the house will put us at twenty-two feet, which is uh I believe three feet from what is allowed right now. Um, if we take a look at this, this is, this is what our house looks like right now.
Screen sharing has stopped.
Oh, did I share just the, I must have shared just the image. Sorry, let me go back here. Uh, and can you see that?
Yes.
All right, so this is the drawing of what our house currently looks like here at seventy-five Dauphin. Um, and this is the side view of the house. Um, what we're proposing is adding this little mudroom onto the front, such this uh side view one and side view number two. Um, again, it's, it's sixty square feet that we're looking at. It's six by ten, or I think it might actually be six and a half is what they marked down. Um, I, that, that is all I really have presented at this point in time. I'm ready for questions.
Very good. Um. So the the reason that you are before us is be, as you had said, is because of the
Front yard setback.
The front yard setback. So this is, um, you know, members of the board are, are well aware, um, other members, other people who might be on the call might not be. Um, the board often receives applications uh from residents seeking to do a, an addition on the front of the house that is small in scale, often it's open porches or, as in this case, an enclosed entryway, uh which the board can approve uh by special permit. Um, and so that is the the reason for the, the hearing today. Um, I did note that the, there are several other uh houses on the street that are similar to yours. Yours would be the the first that has this projection on the front. Um, there is a pretty consistent street line. Um, but that this is a relatively small um small piece on the front, and it's only, you know, a single story in height. Um, the just looking through, did you, you didn't provide a floor plan for uh for this entryway? And I was just could, because it doesn't have any windows on either side, so I just, I wasn't really sure uh what the layout was specifically for this entryway.
Yeah, so we are not one hundred percent. We haven't had the architect do that up yet, but basically, so as I said, it's going to be approximately ten by six. So six feet coming forward, ten feet to the wide. Um, basically, it's a front door on one side. When you walk in, there'll be a, a large closet for our coats and jackets. On the other side, there'll be a spot for cubbies for the kids and my wife and I to hang up our everyday stuff.
Okay.
And that's pretty much it.
And then on the site plan. I'm looking at the site plan here on my screen. Um, yeah, so it is just a, the, the ten by six, and then it looks like the steps. Is there a landing in front of the steps?
In front of the steps?
Uh, sorry, no, not for the steps. Um, so the steps come up, and then there's, I know on your elevation on your side view, it looks like there's a landing, and then there's, you know, four steps down. Um, but I note on the site plan, it does not include that landing in front of the steps.
Yeah, the landing is gonna be all open. It's just going to be a freestanding structure. It won't be, yeah.
No, I just want to make sure that we're, because we don't, because we don't have a plan
Mm-hmm.
specifically, I just wanted to make, make note of that. Um, and the site plan indicates that the depth of the is six, six point five feet. Just wanted to make, confirm with you that's correct. Okay. The addition is six point five by ten. Are there questions for members of the board? Do not see any. Um, with that, I will go ahead and
I won't let you stop, Jerry.
Um, open the meeting for public comment. Uh, public comment is taken as it relates to the matter at hand and is intended to assist the board with reaching its decision. If you would like to speak to this application, please use the raise hand button on the participants tab. I don't think anyone is on the phone. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this application?
We do have a couple of neighbors here.
Okay.
They don't need to say.
But they don't need to say.
Silence is good.
If there are any neighbors who, who would like to, uh, you know, we do accept people speaking in favor of applications. And it's not been the case this evening, but we, we openly encourage that as well.
I've just unmuted myself. I couldn't figure out how to raise my hand, but this is Meg, this is Meg Semeney. I live at seventy-one Dauphin Street. We're neighbors with Justin Adam.
Good evening.
Yes, good evening. Um, and I'm here, but I um just wanted to say we support their plans. They've been really communicative about it. Um, and we think it would make their house look lovely, and we have no objections.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Meg.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this application?
Yeah, I'm Fernanda. I'm their next door neighbor too, uh, to the other side.
If you could just give me the, the street address as well.
Mine is seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, thank you so much.
Yeah, and just like Meg say, all good for us. We think will be really good for their house. And yeah, no objection at all.
Wonderful.
Thanks, Fernanda.
Thank you so much. So anyone else who would like to speak to this application? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment for this, uh, for this particular hearing. So what we have, it's a, an application for a six and a half by ten foot, so sixty-five foot addition on the front of the existing house. Um, so it will reduce the front yard setback to twenty-two feet, um, which the board can approve with uh the granting of a special permit. Just wanted to quickly grab that section of the bylaw. Leave this five, three, nine. Uh, yeah, so the porches and enclosed entrances uh larger than a lot above may extend into the minimum yard regulations otherwise provided for the district by special permit. So that is what we are doing. Um, there was a this was reviewed by the Department of Planning and Community Development. And they had maintained that the proposal was consistent with the special permit criteria. And specifically, they noted um that the criteria one, the requested use is a, is a permitted use in the R one zoning district. Uh, proposal would improve the convenience and safety of the owner's entrance to their home, would not increase traffic congestion or impair any public safety, would not be an undue burden on any municipal systems. It would not result in the need for any special regulation. It would not cause a detrimental excess of any particular use, and they said that the, consistent with the residential design guidelines, the proposed design will introduce human scale architectural variation to the overall streetscape and add visual interest. The applicants may want to consider centering the door panel and adding side windows to the addition and extending the uncovered landing, the full width of the addition. Applicants may also be able to improve upon the consistency of proposed detailing, including eve returns and railing material with the style of the existing house and streetscape. Overall, this proposal would not detrimentally impact the neighborhood character of the district or adjoining districts, nor would it be detrimental to the health morals or welfare of the neighbors of the property. Um,
The architect told us that we couldn't center the due to side um windows.
Oh, okay.
We agree with them.
I like, I like expanding the, the, the uh, the floor, the um, the landing, the whole idea.
Yeah.
So thank you for that.
Let's see, I just go back and put the, put the front elevation here. Um, so yeah, so I think what they were just sort of getting at is that the you sort of had this with this, this front elevation is rather plain to some extent. Um, so I think that they were just sort of encouraging you know, sort of possibly thinking a little bit more about the detailing. Uh, that would be expressed here. Uh, obviously, it is, you know, very much in keeping with the, with what you have otherwise on the house, so.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of boring looking at it from the front, which is one of the reasons we wanted to do this.
Are there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, if the board was to uh act on this application of, the board has the three standard um conditions, which uh Mr. Hanlon read in, into the record on the prior uh case. Are there any other conditions which the board feels would be necessary um in regards to this application?
I just have a question.
Yes, please.
So um, I think you noted that there are no floor plans for this. And so I think one of the uh standard conditions refers to the fact that it will be built in accordance with the floor plans. And, and I, to me, the solution is just to say that, you know, it can be constructed and not to exceed, you know, so many feet by so many feet, whatever the dimensions are. So that gives a little latitude if there have to be some minor revisions. So just a thought, maybe it doesn't need to be said, but it did occur to me.
Well, it's very well taken. Thank you.
And if the architects on the board want to roll their eyes at that suggestion and say, you really don't need to do that, that's fine too. But it just occurred this, as I'm listening to it.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons we did not get the floor plan was because uh if we didn't get this special permit, we would probably have to
Well, we weren't told that we needed to submit a floor plan.
Well, also, but yeah, but we would also have to reconfigure so that we wouldn't be within the, the three foot set, the, the setback. So, yeah.
Okay, so I would then, for Mr. DuPont's um note, I would propose a condition of the proposed addition shall not exceed six point five feet in depth and ten feet in width. And unenclosed landing no greater than four feet in depth shall extend the width of the addition.
Yeah.
That sort of cover everything we talked about?
Yep.
Excellent. Anything further? With that, then I would uh speak a motion on this application.
To chairman?
Mr. Hanlon?
Um, I move that we approve the application subject to the three standard conditions plus the additional condition that the chair just read into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. DuPont. Uh, so this is a roll call vote of the board for approval of the special permit application with the four standard conditions plus the one additional condition. Uh, so then
Excuse me, can I just interject? Did you, um, are you including the one that says that the foundation wall is still the wall? Do we do that typically?
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up. We should include that. Um, so this is a quirk of the Arlington zoning bylaws, so um currently the foundation wall is at the front wall of your house, and by building out the, the small addition, it theoretically moves the front wall of the house forward, which would then allow you to do a much larger addition later by right.
Oh.
But the board routinely includes a condition that um the construction of these types of structures does not move the foundation wall of the house.
Okay, got it.
It's just, all it means is that if you were to do something larger in the future, you would still have to come back to the board. That's
Yeah.
The sole intent of that.
Not in the plans.
Fingers crossed, this is the last one, so.
Okay, so the addition shall not affect the position of the foundation wall. So then, um, Mr. Hanlon, as a friendly amendment, it would be three plus two conditions.
Yes, that's correct. And
Perfect. Um, then with that, we'll do a vote of the board. Um, Mr. Hanlon?
Uh, aye.
Mr. DuPont?
Aye.
Mr. Ricardelli?
Aye.
And Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we really appreciate your, your patience.
Oh, thank you.
For you.
Good luck.
And you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we, um, will you send us all of the uh, the paperwork and the amendments now? Is that how it works, or do we?
So, um, what we'll do is we will prepare a full written um decision that we will need to vote on at a subsequent hearing. Um, which uh will like, will like, we have a, we have a hearing on March ninth on a forty B application, so we could do that as an administrative item at that meeting. And then at that point, there's a twenty day appeal period, um, if anybody wants to appeal it, and then you are free and clear.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
So if you just contact Inspectorial Services, they can walk you through all that.
All right. Well, thanks again, and have a great night, everybody.
Well, thank you.
Good night.
Wow.
Bye-bye.
Um, so, uh, just uh covering a few items here. Um, so we had our hybrid meeting dry run, um, which I, I think we all, we thought was pretty good. Um, we all sort of, I think, also agree that we hope we don't have to use it, so we'll sort of see what, what goes forward. I have not heard anything yet from the state delegation as to whether or not they're gonna be voting in time to allow our meetings to continue remotely, but we will voting in time to allow our meetings to continue remotely, but we will keep everyone informed as that moves forward, so hopefully we'll be hearing something at some point. Did also want to let the board know that, uh, the select board has interviewed a candidate for the open associate position on our board. Um, and that gentleman will be on the, uh, docket with the select board for approval, um, at the start of March. So, um, in short order, we will be back to a full complement of, of members, which would be great. So as I said, our next meeting, uh, Thursday, March ninth is the continued hearing for ten twenty-one, ten twenty-five Mass Ave. Um, we will have us our typical next regular meeting would be March fourteenth, but my understanding is that we do not have any business scheduled for the fourteenth, which I, I will confirm that, but I believe that it's the case. Um, so then that would mean that our subsequent meeting is March twenty-third, which would be the comprehensive permit again, should that be required, and then March twenty-eighth, where we have two continued hearings, um, so far on that date is already. So that's
You're correct about the fourteenth, we don't have anything ready for that, but, but, um, we have a bunch on the twenty eighth.
Oh, perfect, um. And so we'll, uh, so Pat, are you able to take on a, a deci- writing the decision for this case?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, um.
So we have two, one hubs, two twenty hubs and seventy-five Dalton.
And you're okay taking on both of those, or do you want to sh- share the well?
How far away is nine days, I'd like to share the well, there's a lot of things coming up in the next week.
Yeah, I could take a, do you want me to take a stab at the hubs?
Sure, I'll do that.
Okay. It works, um. Anything else from, from the board?
Nope.
Not, I think we are at an end, so I'd like to thank you all for your participation in tonight's meeting of the Arlington Zoning Board of Appeals. I appreciate everyone's patience throughout the meeting, I would especially like to thank uh, Colleen Rawson and, um, Marissa Lau for their assistance in preparing for and hosting this online meeting, I would especially like to thank, uh, Pat Hanlon for taking over uh, for the start of the meeting, uh, I myself was, this is the first meeting I have not been at a portion of in over two years, so it was a little strange for me to sort of log on. Appreciate, I appreciate Pat stepping in for me, it was, uh, uh, in another role, I am a scout master of one of the local scout troops and one of the scouts who I've known since he was eight or seven, um, had, had his Eagle Scout border review tonight, so I wanted to not miss that on his behalf, so appreciate people letting me do that, um. So, uh, please note the purpose, the purpose of the board's recording this meeting is to ensure the creation of an accurate record of our proceedings, as our understanding the recording made by ACMI will be available on demand at ACMI dot TV within the coming days. And if anyone has comments or recommendations, please send them via email to zba@town.arlington.ma.us. That email address is also listed on the Zoning Board of Appeals website. And to conclude tonight's meeting, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
And thank Mr. DuPont. So a vote of the boards to adjourn, Mr. DuPont.
Aye.
Mr. Hanlon.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman.
Aye.
And Mr. Ricardelli.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well, we are adjourned, thank you all very, very much.
Good night, everyone.
Mr. Chairman.